Let's call it to order, City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Chris.
Present.
Ma'am. Marcus.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation is done by Reverend Maxine Shilts from Revealing Truth Church. Didn't know so many people were going to be here, huh?
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I did not know when this was scheduled, what the topic was going to be. It's a topic that I've been begging the Lancaster School District to deal with for years, very near and dear to my heart. I'm so grateful for Del Sur for getting it started. I'm grateful for you for bringing it to the town. It needs to go to the Antelope Valley in general and throughout the world. We have a real problem with bullying. So with that said, let's just close our eyes and center ourselves. And as we come together, we know that Spirit, God, Allah, Buddha, whatever you call your higher power, is right here and right now, working in around and through each of us here, each of the council people, the Sheriff's Department, and everyone who is taking part in this monumental program to end behavior that never should have begun. We accept Spirit, God's guidance, His protection of our young people and of our old people for bullying is a cross-the-board experience. It knows no categories. And to reach into the hearts of the people who are bullied, who bully, and who are the bystanders and therefore covert bullies. It is with gratitude, it is with great acceptance that we allow Spirit to work through the city council and the school districts and the parents who definitely need to hear the message, to bring us to a place where children are safe, allowed to speak for what they need to speak, and accepted for what they're saying. Thank you, Spirit, God. We are so grateful, and amen.
Ms. Marcus, you want to lead us in the flexible?
Sure. Right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few presentations tonight before we get to Not in Our Town. We first have Robert Field and Delano Delphin. If they can come up with the city manager, you're helping me with this. This is last week, right? Last week. A lot of you read about the incident at the park where somebody was trying to kidnap a 12-year-old girl, and these are the two gentlemen that prevented that from happening and got the Sheriff's Department involved. A couple of years ago, Mr. Bozegian started a program in the city of training the city staff to keep your eyes open, to pay attention, to start protecting our town, which is something every one of us should be doing, which every one of us should be engaged in all the time. These two gentlemen were doing precisely that and did exactly what they were supposed to do, and as a result, this guy was taken off the street and this little girl wasn't hurt. If we were all to do that, what a different community we would have. The people wouldn't even think about being bad guys if we were all observant as these two gentlemen were. And again, we thank you for that. And so we have certificates. Robert? Let's get a picture. Let's come over here. Individually?
Can I look at it? I picked up one, but I don't know how much.
And, Delano, come on over. Here. Thanks. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Two real heroes. Thank you. Athlete of the Month. That's for what? Athlete of the Month.
Yes.
I'm going to do it off of this? Okay. Well, I'm going to try to do this without reading all the whereases. I don't know why we put those things in, but I guess we've been doing it for hundreds of years. So Dejawn Gaines?
I'm voiding.
Dejawn is from Eastside High School. He's on the football team. He's on the Lions, right? Yeah, you guys took my two Lions from my office. You got them now, right? Yeah. They have a 3-0 record in a league and a 4-2 overall start. He has a 3-0 record in the league and a 4-2 overall start to the season, and he has surpassed his entire totals for last season thus far. It's just the beginning of the season, right? Rushing for nearly 1,000 yards, scoring 13 touchdowns. This is in four games? We've got to watch this guy. He's going places. He has been contacted by USC, Boise State, USC Davis, and other schools for potential athletic scholarships. So who are you looking at?
Boise State.
Boise State? Okay. He maintains a 3.3 GPA, has spoken with UCLA, UC Berkeley, and Texas Southern concerning his, their aeronautical engineering programs. You're going to be coming back, right? He also runs track for Eastside, leading the team in the 100, 200-meter dash, the 4-100 relay, the long jump, and Eastside won the Golden League in Dejawn's sophomore season. His unique strength workout, oh, his unique strength workout regime takes place during the summer at his grandfather's 120-acre East Texas ranch. Yeah, I'll bet that's unique. He bales hay, builds fences, rolls 300-pound hay bales, all while utilizing football techniques and visual... I didn't write this. This coming summer, he hopes to get a position as an intern at a local aerospace firm. We ought to be able to help him with that. Yeah, that's an easy win. On behalf of the City of Lancaster, we want to thank you and award you Lancaster Athlete of the Month. Thank you. You also get a $1,000 Mayor Scholarship. If we can, have we figured out a way to do that yet?
Yes, we contact the compliance office of each school, and there's a way to do it.
Okay. See, we were blowing people's CIF eligibility. It was really an embarrassment, but no, you get that, you'll be, we'll do that through the school, whatever school you pick, okay?
Okay.
Great. Thank you. So now we get to the world-changing part. About six months ago, I had the opportunity to go to Del Sur Junior High School. Junior High School or is it? It's elementary school.
Senior elementary.
K through eight. Oh, they changed it since I went. No, no, since I was in... Yeah, that was a while ago. But I actually completed that, so. Anyway, it was a remarkable experience, you know? I mean, I was just, I was expecting to be bored to death, you know? I've got to do these things as mayor, you know? And what I saw there was truly, truly remarkable. It was remarkable on many fronts. The teaching that was going on in those classrooms is really state-of-the-art teaching. It's stuff I've been reading about, stuff I'd never dreamed we would actually be seeing this early in Lancaster. It was fascinating to watch, and I left with an awareness that I don't know how these teachers do four, five, six classes a day. I mean, I'd be literally exhausted. They were that engaged, that involved, and that on top of all of their students. It was, it was a pleasure to watch. And then they talked to me about the Not in Our Town, well, Not in Our School bullying program that Lori Massari started. And when they started this program, only 60% of the students felt safe. That meant 40% of their student body felt like they were in danger when they went to school. And I think bullying is something all of us have experienced at least once. Some of us have experienced it much more than once, and I think there's probably nothing worse, especially when you're in grammar school, to have to go to school being afraid. What Lori and Del Sur and what the, and it took their board, it took all of the teachers, it took their principal, it took total engagement at Del Sur to accomplish this, now only 2% sometimes feel unsafe at school. And they did that in a year, I think, wasn't it? I mean, imagine the work it took to do that. And when you're on the campus, you see it, you know? One of the things I look for is, are there any kids walking alone, you know, by themselves? The ones that become the victims? I didn't see any. Everybody was engaged, everybody had a friend, everybody was active. That took effort on the part of the adults at that school that I think is truly remarkable. What she accomplished there, or what they all accomplished there, is something that if we had it in every school in this city, we would, I don't think we would have a gang problem. You know, since I've been mayor, I've been reading a lot about why we have gangs, why we really have gangs, is kids are afraid. They're afraid and hypervigilant, and that causes gangs to form. If you can take away that fear factor, you're not going to have gangs. You're going to have a totally different community, and that's why we're doing Not in Our Town. Now, they gave me a script to read, but I'm too excited about it to read somebody else's script about it. It's just, I think, one of the most world-changing things that Lancaster is presently doing, and if it spreads, we're going to have a different country. And so who do I turn it over to now?
Lori.
Lori?
Lori and Regina.
And these are the two ladies that are responsible for this. Regina is the superintendent of Westside, and we all know that, you know, the state has just stripped U Bear of money. I mean, they have no money. And they protected this program, they kept it alive. When everybody, when a lot of people were saying that this was a frill, they were saying, no, this is an absolute necessity. And now what we're doing is we're attempting to just spread this throughout Lancaster. With their leadership, I think it's going to happen.
And we are truly excited about our opportunity to share our anti-bullying program with the community and appreciate you, Mayor Paris, coming out and being encouraging to us that we could do more and we could spread the message differently than just in Westside School District. I also have to thank Councilman Chris, who connected us with the city in the first place when he was on another commission, bringing us into the city to share that information. So both of you gentlemen have really, I think, stepped up and taken a big step for our community because bullying, unlike in the past when you could go home and be free for a few hours, now is a 24/7 experience for many of our children with cyberbullying, et cetera. Westside School District is very proud to be the sponsor with the city in this and to have the support of the other school districts, Lancaster School District, Eastside and Antelope Valley Union High School District partnering with us as well, and we are pleased to be here. As superintendent, sometimes my job is to see a really great idea and get the heck out of the way and let that idea germinate and grow. And when Lori brought the idea forward at the behest of her school principal, Mr. Barker, who's sitting back here, it was a wonderful opportunity for our children to understand that there's another way to do business in the way that maybe they are currently doing so. So Lori put together a program that really researched bullying and how to prevent bullying, and that's what we're presenting. And I really want to not take any more time other than to thank my board that's sitting back here because they also have a great deal of foresight in trying to make sure that our kids are safe at school all of the time. Our goal is 100% of the time. So Lori Massari is our counselor at Del Sur School.
Before you start, before you start, you want to introduce your board?
I guess I can do that. President John Kurio. Vice President Gwen Farrell.
Come on, stand up, guys. You'll get votes here.
Clerk Linda Jones. And member Steve DiMarzio. And regrets from our fifth member of our board who's in class tonight. She would have preferred to be here, but, you know, sometimes Judy calls. Anyways, it also took a lot of foresight on their part because the things that we are going to talk about, we have been very direct with, and that is a difficult position sometimes for a board to step up and say, even if the message isn't pleasant about what we need to do as a community to change behavior, and we all need to understand it, we're moving forward. We are going to get that message out because it's going to save some of our children. But I have to give credit to Lori. She's the primary architect of our program. So Lori?
Thank you. And I would also like to thank Mayor Paris for embracing our program and for finding it important so that we could have your support and bring this program to this level. What I would like to do, though, is invite a few people up here with me. My principal, Tim Barker. If not for the leadership of this gentleman, I don't think this program would be in existence. He asked me to do it, and I'm following his directive, and I'm just, because of the work environment that he creates at our school, programs like this are allowed to thrive in that environment. I would also like to acknowledge and invite up all 18 of my Del Sur true leaders to come up and just stand behind me, please. Because it is, it is their work, I think, and the seriousness of the project and how they took that to heart, that we were able to have that success on our campus. And for me tonight, my number-one purpose for being here is that I'm hoping that my students see that when you step out and do something for other people and you work hard at it, and you're not afraid to step out and share a little bit, that mighty things can happen. So I'm hoping that they'll never forget this event, that whatever issues become important to them over the years, whether it be bullying, whether it be, whatever it may be, that these students understand the impact and the power of their words and their actions. And so I'm very proud of my students, glad for their success, and want to thank them very much for their dedication. It has not been easy for them. They've had a lot to learn, and I just appreciate them so much so they can stay up here with me. There's a few other people I definitely want to acknowledge, and that would be Mark Bozegian, the city manager, who has been working very closely with me on this project, but especially Kelvin Tana Tongo, who has been the liaison for the city to me. And without his help, I don't know how we would accomplish this. And so Kelvin, I just want to acknowledge you, and I appreciate working with you. It has been a pleasure to work with you, and I hope we can continue to work together in the future. I want to thank all of the superintendents of the four participating school districts and the school boards for supporting our efforts here. What this community may not understand, that when we delve into this issue of bullying, it opens up a can of worms for us. It is often difficult for us as educators to address, and so we proceed with caution, but we know that it's something that we have to do. And I think it takes a lot of bravery on the part of the superintendents and the board members, and so I wanted to thank them for their support. And I would like to ask the principals of the 20 participating Not in Our Town schools if they wouldn't mind standing if they're not already standing. What I would like to say on their behalf, if you have never been a principal or if you have not worked alongside one, you have no idea of the magnitude of the job that they do. And yet, in the case of bullying, as you know, they are ultimately responsible for every activity, whether it be positive or negative, that happens on their campus. And many of these people have upwards of 3,000 and more students on their campus, so the idea of handling bullying on their campus is extremely difficult. And I just want them to know that all of us here are here to stand in support of them. We need this community to stand behind them, and instead of pointing the finger at them, call them up and ask them how you can help. This is only going to happen with the support of a lot of people, but every single one of these principals is here because they believe in this. We all have a different philosophy of how we're going to come to that end, but we all have that same vision in mind that we definitely want the bullying to stop on our campuses. So these are the people who need us the most, I think, in this effort, and I just wanted to let them know that we are rallying behind them, and we appreciate their support as well. I would now like to ask the team leads and student ambassadors from all of the 20 participating schools to stand. These are the people who have stepped up to do the dirty work, I guess we can call it, the grunt work. They're actually going to be out there, they're going to be out there on the front lines in this project, which, as you know, the Not in Our Town anti-bullying campaign is a three-day project, but it is step one of 10,000 steps towards stopping bullying on a campus, and all it is is the awareness piece. It's step one. But that is oftentimes the hardest step to take, and so I just want to let these team leads and student ambassadors know just how much this community will appreciate the work that they are doing on their campuses. And the lead student ambassadors that are here are chosen of 10 students from their schools, so they are considered the leader among leaders on their school campuses. This program is a student-centered student ambassador program. We want to put the power into the hands of the students, as I have done on our campus, because as we know, kids will do what other kids inspire them to do, not what the adults inspire them to do. So that is going to be the ultimate goal of this program, is that we get the students on board with this, so that for the students, in this culture change, it becomes totally unacceptable on their campuses for this kind of behavior to continue. And then finally, I would like to thank our community sponsors. We've rallied more than 30 business sponsors in this community who have donated money and support toward the development of this program.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We didn't applaud the guys doing the work. Come on.
And appreciate the support of all of the businesses in this community. And so the partnership between this community, the city, and the four participating school districts creates a powerful army of people that I think will begin to change the climate within our own community. I would like to let those business sponsor contributors to the program know that I am hoping that our emphasis for the money that they have donated to our program will go toward training of the team leads and student ambassadors and school principals that are involved in this program, that that money will also go toward keeping this coalition of 20 schools together, that the educators that are standing behind me will, the leaders among them emerge and join me because I can no longer live like this in doing this by myself, and I need the help of my colleagues. And we'll form a team, and we will continue in some format to keep this project going. So thank you very much. Looking forward to having this proclamation.
Lori, 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 before you sit down, I want you to look at this. I mean, you created this. None of this would have happened without you. I have never seen these chambers filled with something that was positive. It's always been, you know, don't do this, don't do that. I've just never seen this. And, you know, I've been in the fringes of city government law many, many years before I was mayor. This is totally unique, and you created it, and I can't tell you just how awed I am by what you've done.
And mayor and the members of the city council, as we continue, tonight is the evening where we're going to proclaim Not in Our Town. So we have tonight a student speaker who is going to read a portion of our proclamation along with a familiar face that many of you will know, actor Robert Dobbie with Sunline Films. He'll be joining us also tonight to read the proclamation, and I'll finalize the ending of that proclamation. And then we'll ask Mr. Dobbie, he's got a few words about some of the things he's working on as it relates to the anti-bullying programs that he's been involved in. And we have five proclamations up here tonight that we will, after that, request yourself as well as members of the four districts, school board districts, to come down and sign the proclamation so they can take them back to their respective board districts, and we can have ours as well. So with that, I want to introduce Madison Mendez, who will be reading a portion of our proclamation, and then followed with Mr. Dobbie.
Whereas schools make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens. Whereas excellence in education is dependent on safe, peaceful, and distinguished learning environments. Whereas the problem of bullying has escalated to unacceptable proportions across the globe, throughout this country and in our own community, interfering with the emotional, social, and academic development of our youth.
Also, whereas we safeguard schools for our children and guarantee them an environment that holds promise and security, and whereas it is critical that we acknowledge and heighten awareness about the negative effects of bullying, which may include the risk of teenage suicide, and whereas it is the personal responsibility of all citizens of the City of Lancaster to create solutions to prevent bullying, including educators, parents, business owners, civic leaders, and law enforcement personnel.
And whereas Del Sur School and the Westside Union School District have initiated a partnership with the City of Lancaster to form a coalition of anti-bullying schools, this coalition will include the school districts of the Antelope Valley High School District, Union High Schools, Eastside Union, Lancaster, and Westside Union School Districts. Now therefore, be it declared that the community of Lancaster, California will designate the week of November 15th through the 19th, 2010, to anti-bullying activities in all participating schools, and that we stand together as a community united with unwavering resolve that when it comes to bullying, we stand by this pledge proclaimed on October 26, 2010, "Not in Our Town." And with that, I do want to allow Mr. Dobbie to say a few words about what he's doing, and then we'll invite the folks to come down and sign our proclamation.
Robert, if you could just pull that back and address the audience.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, and board members, and everyone else, and Lori, I don't live in Lancaster. I live in Chatsworth, but I'm friends of Dennis Gere and the mayor, and Lori, and a bunch of people. And Dennis called me up and told me about this Not in Our Town program. Now, besides being an actor, and you may have seen some of the films I've done, from Goonies to Die Hard, James Bond, a bunch of different films, since I did a television series in 1997 called Profiler, where I played the head of the FBI who created profiling. And during that time, I went to Quantico in 1996, which is the FBI academy, and I got very friendly with the FBI and learned a lot about serial killing and a lot of what this proclamation talks about in terms of bullying. I then became, I was asked to become the national spokesperson for iSafe America, which is the most, in 1997 till current, which is the most all-inclusive internet safety program in the country, and has now been adapted around the world, from Japan to different parts of Asia and Europe. And in 19, do you remember when Columbine happened? And I think that was the most vagrant, or the most explicit example of bullying, and what it would lead to in the nation. And at that time, I had iSafe develop a cyberbullying program that worked in conjunction with schools, that would have an incident report kind of thing, because a lot of times, kids, they don't want to tell on their friends, or they're too ashamed to talk to adults about something. So how do they, how do they get it out? So that you're doing this program about peer-to-peer is so necessary, because I think a child will feel much more comfortable talking to someone in school. So I encourage all you kids that are, I'm just proud of all of you for being so involved in this program and having this program, and you should take it nationwide eventually. As you know, in New York recently, there was a college student, because of cyberbullying, that committed suicide. This should not happen. And, you know, look, I'm not the kind of guy that's been bullied when he was in school. But I got to tell you, I helped a lot of kids that I, because I did not respond to kids being bullied. And we didn't have a program, nor the awareness that you do nowadays. So I congratulate all of you, and it's crucial that this program continues to take root. And, boy, Lancaster's some city, I got to tell you, with this athlete and guy saving kids, you got yourself a nice city here. But God bless all of you. I'm also on the steering committee at George Washington University for the Homeland Security Policy Institute. So I'm not just a pretty face. But anyway, God bless all of you, and congratulations on this wonderful program.[782.87][782.87][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Davi. I appreciate those words. And I now would like to invite the mayor to come down and join a representative from the Antelope Valley Union High School District Board, as well as the Eastside School District Board, the Lancaster School District Board, and the Westside Union School District Board. If you can join me up here So what we're having tonight here is the signing of our Not in Our Town proclamation by all four school districts representing the middle school and high schools of the community of Lancaster, along with the mayor of Lancaster, saying that our community is
Kevin, before you close, I have a story to tell, because I like to tell stories. Two things happened in the last two weeks. One is I finished a book called Well-Being, and it was about how to have that feeling of well-being, you know? How do you feel good about yourself? How do you feel good about everything? And the end of the book, it talked about the well-being of communities. And what it really comes down to, before any of us can ever have that feeling, we have to feel safe in our community. We have to feel safe walking to our car, to our house, walking around our neighborhoods. And if we lack that fundamental feeling of safety, it is impossible for us to have everything else that comes with it, because our stress levels are too high. It's impossible to even have physical health if we do not have that feeling of safety in our community. What we've seen here tonight is that it really is within our control to create that. It is really within our ability to do that. And I find it interesting that we learn it from the K through 8 grade students. I mean, imagine the courage that it took for them to make their school safe. Imagine all of the anxieties and fears and terrors that they had to encounter to do this. We saw two people that were adults who work with the city who totally got that message. If we all got that message, we could have that community that would enable all of our families to have a chance at living a life of well-being. The other thing that happened in the last two weeks is we had some people from China come visit us. One of them was this remarkable woman who literally has built cities, I mean, for millions, housing for millions of people. I mean, in China, you do things very big. They got a lot of people. And I was able to spend the day with her, and one of the things she told me, she said, "If you have any hope of having a great city, you have to have great schools." It is the absolute fundamental requirement for a great city that you have great schools, because people won't live there if they're not great schools. And again, that is something we have the ability to accomplish. It is something that a lot of us have not paid a lot of attention to, and we have to start paying a lot more attention to, what do we need to do differently to create a great school? You know, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a lot of motion in that direction. We see Del Sur. We see the SOAR program that the high school put together, which is a state-of-the-art high school that is capable of competing with Harvard-Westlake. You know, that's the one they spend $50,000 a year to send their kids to. Can you imagine? $50,000 a year for high school. But that's what they send them, and they don't even get to live there. It's, and we've been able to duplicate that in Lancaster, in the Antelope Valley. We need to do that with all of our schools, and something truly remarkable will happen in this community. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.[1322.16][1322.16][applause]
I just wanted to announce some final housekeeping things. If there are businesses out there that are watching this, and they have an interest in participating, they can still contact the Westside Union School District offices. If they have an interest in sponsoring the Not in Our Town program, so we invite them to do that. And also to announce that the November 15th through 19th program also includes, on November 17th, at the Lancaster Performing Arts Center, a memorial service that the student leaders put together. That date may sound different tonight to some folks. They had been working towards a November 18th date, but I wanted to make that announcement tonight, that we are rescheduling that to November 17th at 6:00 PM. For those folks who are involved in that presentation, we'll get the word out to them. So November 17th, 6:00 PM, LPAC, to the Not in Our Town Darkness to Light Ceremony that will take place at the Performing Arts Center. With that, I want to thank everyone who's been involved with, from all the school districts and the city council for allowing the Not in Our Town program to be in Lancaster.
In order for people to sort, meaning some of you, I imagine, want to go home at this point and get something to eat, we'll take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll resume. Let's start. We got to come back. Sue's got to quit talking.[1439.13][1439.13][laughter] Okay, the next on the agenda is we have a presentation from the Los Angeles County Housing Authority, and we are making progress. So let's hear what they have to say.[1452.26][1452.26][crosstalk] Oh, fine. You come back when it's good news, huh?[1463.76][1463.76][laughter]
Yeah, I was ducking you last month.[1468.01][1468.01][laughter] Good afternoon, or rather, good evening, council members. Actually, I want to say it's been a pleasure coming here every month and working with you to try to improve the relationship between the LA County Housing Authority and the City of Lancaster. However, this will be my last presentation to you. So I'm going to bring up, well, I brought up Tracy Mann, the manager of our Antelope Valley office. It will either be her or another representative from the housing authority presenting going forward.
Well, you should have told me this was going to be your last. I had to prepare a cross-examination.
Well, go right ahead. You know, I'm a short timer. I can say whatever almost I want. But with that being said, I want to ask, did you get the information ahead of time? We tried to mail you a letter. Okay. So, but without, with that being said, as of August, the end of August, in the City of Lancaster, we had 2,226 active contracts. We had, we processed two new contracts in the month of August, both of which came from other housing authorities. We terminated 12 contracts. And currently, we're still 100% on time with our annual reexaminations. We're 100% on time with our annual inspections. And we're currently 99% leased up. Our lease-up number has dropped from 100 to 99%. Thus, we are now actively pulling names from our waiting list and processing new applications as we go into the new calendar year. And one other note, from the last meeting, I understand that you asked a question regarding doing a survey of neighborhoods, and I just wanted to respond. I don't know what the response was at that, at the previous meeting, but the housing authority at this time does not have the resources to conduct such a survey. Okay? You'd also asked about the fair market rents. We have been working with local HUD to try to get a response to your question, and that is still in the process at this time. We haven't been able to gather all the information needed to report back, but we're still working on that with our local HUD office. Okay? And with that, I'll be willing to take any questions, and I may defer something to Ms. Mann, so she can get her feet wet.
Any questions?
How many contracts in Palmdale?
Palmdale? Oh, okay. Surprise. Palmdale, we have 1,416.
That seems a little out of balance.
How many did you terminate in Palmdale?
In the city of Palmdale, there were, actually, terminated contracts? No, that's, that's period 12.
12. Same as Lancaster?
Well, actually, that's what I was thinking. That's the wrong number. Lancaster was 12, and maybe totals 18. Palmdale for the period, yes, 12.
Mr. Jean, because I just had one question. Would you say that the housing authority has given the investigators every tool available to uncover fraud within the Section 8 program here in Lancaster?
I believe we've given our investigation team all the tools that are allowed, that we're allowed to provide to them to ensure the integrity of our program, and we are still pursuing other tools that we can use outside of the investigation unit to ensure the integrity of our program, through other automated means that are provided by HUD and other automated means that we're working with, with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department.
Is there any requirement that recipients who have children, that their children attend school?
No.
Doesn't that seem like an obvious thing we should be doing?
I think that's an excellent idea, and I would hope that someone would champion that idea with Congress, and maybe they can enact some legislation to make that a requirement. But as of right now, that is not a requirement of the program.
If, well, maybe it is. Maybe it is. I mean, they're required to follow all the laws, right?
They're required to follow the laws and the local ordinances, yes.
And some district attorney's offices actually bring child neglect charges if they're, you know, especially in grammar school, if they're not attending school. And I'm wondering, is there something that we could champion with that? I mean, it just seems so obvious to me that if we could just make certain everybody's going to school, at least through the sixth grade, they have a fighting chance in this world. Is there something we could do in the City of Lancaster with existing laws to develop a pilot program to see if we can a pilot program to see if we can make that a reality? That would require us first to find out, is it a problem? Maybe everybody on Section 8, all of their kids are attending school, and that'd be something we should know. But if it's not, why can't we have a pilot program in Lancaster to enforce that? We have, we certainly have the network that, in Lancaster, that's capable of providing the information. If we put law enforcement, got them involved in pursuing this, we would just need your agency's involvement and concurrence and engagement in making it a reality.
As far as making it a requirement of the program...
That's not what I'm asking. I'm saying, will you enforce it? If I put that together in Lancaster, will you guys start pulling vouchers? I mean, and I think we should give everybody a six-month warning period. Let's say, look, this is coming. This is coming. You have to have your kids in school. But if we put together the program in Lancaster, will you start pulling vouchers?
That's what I, I understood the question. The regulations are specific on what, on reasons why we can terminate someone. So if it's found that someone has broken the law in one of the categories that requires us to terminate them, yes, we will be actively involved in, with you and with our clients in terminating them from the program.
Sherry, would you get the neighborhood, what is it?
Vitalization.
Would you get them involved in this? Let's see if we can do, I just think that this has real potential of making a permanent improvement on people's lives, at least the children's lives. You, so...
I don't disagree at all. I think children should be required to go to school, and the parents should be required to make them go to school.
Okay, I'm going to put a lot of resources into this. I want to make certain you guys don't let us down if I do that.
Well, if our clients are found to have broken the law in one of the categories that the federal government requires us, or allows us to terminate, we will terminate.
Okay, thank you.
Our new directive under the board and our new directive is that there is a zero tolerance for criminal activity or those who break the program rules.
It also will require you to help us publicize this to the people involved. I don't want anybody being surprised, right? I want it totally fair, but what I'd like to see is all of the children in school, right? And nobody, and nobody get terminated. You know, that's what I'd like, like the goal to be.
If this is enacted, we can definitely add that to our briefing session so when we're communicating with our clients, explaining the rules, the do's, the don'ts, we can actually provide that as well.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, good. Thank you. And again, thank you for taking the time and energy to do this. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. Any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Are there any items on the agency consent calendar you would like to pull for discussion, or do we have a motion and a second for adoption of the agency consent calendar?
I move that we adopt the agency consent calendar.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous with Councilman Mayan absent. Do we have a motion and a second on the minutes?
So moved?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We didn't have anything to remove from the agenda, but there is a need to add an item as an urgency matter tonight.
Okay.
I think now would be the appropriate time to do that.
I'm all ears.
And this matter did come up just today and needs to be discussed in closed session prior to, prior to our next meeting. And so that would require a four-fifths vote, which would require a unanimous vote of the council to add the item tonight to the agenda. And it is, the item is a closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9B, and it's based on facts and circumstances which indicate a definite likelihood of a possible lawsuit concerning facts that the plaintiffs are most likely not aware of. So beyond that, we can't disclose any additional items under the Brown Act, but we need to add that discussion to the agenda for later in the meeting.
I move that we, we put it on the agenda for tonight.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. It's forfeits. Okay. I want to take CC 6 off the consent calendar. And with that, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar?
Prove the council consent calendar is currently comprised?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous with Councilman Mayan absent. Now we have the youth commission. I would, are they my nominations? I'm sorry, sir. I nominate them?
Yes, you nominate. They've been recommended by each school.
Okay, so that's Brittany Lewis. Is Brittany here? This is not a graduation. We will hold our applause until everybody's announced. Thank you. Jonathan Kay? Cheyenne Eslick? Did I get that right? Okay. Trent Kelly? Catherine Kern? Samantha Gregory? And I'm nominating them for the 2010-2011 Lancaster Youth Commission. And before I do that, I want to talk a little bit about the youth commission. All of my children were on the youth commission. And, you know, when they first started doing it, I thought, you know, just another thing kids do, wasn't all that impressed with it, until I saw what they actually do. They actually follow staff people around. They find out what it really takes to run a city. And then my son, Rutger, when he went to the University of Wisconsin, he used that on his resume and didn't even, didn't even mention me, and went in and got a job at the city council as a, as an intern with one of the councilmen in Madison, which he's still working at today. And it was all very familiar to him. He was totally comfortable within city government, and he was able to hit the ground running and actually perform a viable service, and they keep rehiring him every year. And I don't think that would have happened had he not been on the youth commission. So this is, this is an incredible opportunity that you guys are going to have. I hope you learn a tremendous amount and that you not waste a second of it because this is, this is really an incredible experience you're about to embark on. And with that, can I have a motion?
I'll move that we, we adopt these, appoint these commissioners, youth commissioners. I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous with Councilman Mayan absent. And now we get to swear you in. The city clerk will swear you in. At this point, I always get nervous and mess up the oath, and all I have to do is repeat what they're saying. I hope that doesn't happen to you.
If you all raise right hands, you can move a little closer to the microphone. Kind of past the pole there. And then repeat after me using your own name. I.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support within the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support within the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies born and domestic.
Against all enemies born and domestic.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Wow, they were right in order, too.
So do we have some parents here? What a surprise. Come on down. Let's get a picture.
Mayor, would you like to come down? If you'll take your certificate out, you can hold it up in front.
You already got a check? You gotta go stand over there. No, I'm kidding. Who's taller? Okay, moving on to new business item one. Deputy City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity again today to announce yet another partnership that we believe as staff, and I know you believe as council, is going to do our part to change the world as well. Today, we have before you power purchase agreements with the Lancaster School District, the Eastside School District, and the Antelope Valley Fair. These power purchase agreements are another project that is a result of our energy program that is, has a growing list of achievements and projects. The, we'll start with the Solar Lancaster Project, which is our residential retrofit program, which has been marketed and advertised to assist locals, residences, businesses to go solar. Our energy efficiency upgrades with the Johnson Controls Contract, which will make all of our facilities more energy efficient, saving energy. Morgan Solar Lease through our Lancaster Soccer Center that'll be generating electricity to provide to those facilities there. And this is a state-of-the-art project, a test project, so to speak, to generate new technology. Changes in our municipal code to allow wind and solar and modifications to the zoning code to allow easier, more process for, an easier process for commercial-scale developers to build, and many more to come. This project here allows the city to own, operate, and maintain solar facilities on school district property and the fair property and generate that electricity and sell that to the school districts. The costs associated with the construction and operation of this facility is less than the costs associated for the school districts to pay. So there is a maintenance component of this that will be absorbed by the city and handled by the city. At the same token, the school districts will save money in exchange for, instead of paying Edison, they will then begin to pay the city. Approximate savings for the partners is about $500,000 annually. So the unique benefits of this project are, one, there's no additional cost to any person involved, and in fact, their savings, as well as the capital component of that, is amortized over a period of time, and also the capital costs are paid for through the savings. The decision tonight is a 7.6 megawatt project, which brings the total of megawatts generated by the city to a total of 10 megawatts to be generated by the city. One, the 7.6, which is already, that we're approving tonight, and a 2.5 megawatt project, which we've already approved on our own facilities to generate electricity. The equivalent of that is approximately planting 2.3 million trees. It removes 4.3 million pounds of CO from the atmosphere, carbon dioxide from the atmosphere, and all with the benefit of saving money. There's some ancillary benefits to the project as well. If you look, we'll have a couple pictures up. The shade structures that plan to be, plan to be built on the schools specifically in the parking lots will provide shade to the cars in the facilities, utilizing unused space. And as well in some of the school district facilities, there are, as you can see there, walkways, pavilions, places for students to sit and eat under outdoors and providing that shade facility. As relates to the fair, the fair will also be building two large pavilions that'll be utilized by the community when they're attending the fair events, so that this will be a sitting area that'll be covered and shaded during the events. So not only do they save money, not only do they save the environment, but it provides a much-needed resource on a bit of land that is very underutilized. The, the one note, and I think sometimes we overlook in some of these projects, and it's, you know, we talk about saving the environment, saving, saving money, generating money, but we also look at the opportunity to create economic development opportunities. The project that we're talking about tonight is going to cost $33 million. That's going to be creating a significant amount of jobs to the community, to people who are, you know, out of work and unemployed, underemployed, that without the leadership of this council, without the leadership of the school districts and the fair board, these funds would not be available. Partial funding is through a California Solar Initiative, which gives incentives for governments and business to build these kind of facilities, and that helps defray some of the costs as well and make it cost beneficial to all parties involved. I believe there are some representatives from the school districts here tonight, and I would be remiss without thanking Robert Neal and his staff for doing a wonderful job in putting this project together, and specifically Chris Ludlam in Public Works Staff who made this, made this all possible. The project is also a partnership with SolarCity, which we have established a long relationship with and have done, have been a company that has done everything they've said they're going to do and done it well. And Jeff Palmer is here representing SolarCity as well, if there's any questions of him. With that, be happy to answer any questions and recommend that you, recommend that you authorize the city manager to negotiate and approve the power purchase agreements with Lancaster School District, Eastside School District, and the Antelope Valley Fair, and present the city council, and present for council approval at the next council meeting the necessary funding documents to make this project happen.
Any questions?
I just was curious. You said it's, the project is $33 million.
Correct.
And can you put a number of jobs on that?
You know, I don't know if Jeff has a number of people that he's going to be employing on this project. I don't know. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I don't really have a specific number, but it's above 100.
For how long?
Eighteen to twenty-four months. We anticipate generating the first kilowatt in April of 2012, so this is a major project. Now, there may be kilowatts at individual sites that are generated before then, but the project should be completed around that time.
Any accounts? Okay, thank you. We have one speaker card. Diane Grooms from Lancaster School District.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you very much for this opportunity.
I already want a discount.
When Robert Neal came to us and said, we want to save you money and also cover your parking for your staff, your volunteers, and your parents, it was a win-win for us, but the long-term savings in terms of energy makes it a wonderful partnership with the city. And the board asked me to be here tonight to say thank you very much for bringing us into that opportunity, and we welcome future opportunities as well. Lancaster School District will save approximately $300,000 a year through this. That's a lot of education that we can give our students.
No, you can fund Not in Our Town now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the staff's recommendation, authorize the city manager to negotiate the approved power print.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous with Ken Mann absent. Okay, moving on to the council agenda. Oh, okay. I'm nominating Dan Ventrioli to the Lancaster Museum Art Gallery Foundation Board, and to be the chairman of that board, right? He's already on the foundation, isn't he? Got to do two steps? Okay, to appoint him and also, and also make him the chairman of it. As you can see, the museum is, they're progressing, which promises to be an incredible facility. You guys did an unbelievable job on that. I'm just, every time I look at it, I can't believe that it's rising before our eyes. But more important, you know, what great, every great city has great public art, and we really don't have much public art. And so, I think it's a component of building a great city that's vitally important, and Dan is a person who can actually get it done. Because I'm not giving him any money to do it. That's really hard. But he's soon to be President of GABA. Everything that he's touched, he's completed. He's incredibly creative and talented, but most of all, he's aggressive in getting things accomplished. And if there's anybody who can do what I think needs to be done in this city in regards to having a public art component that is vibrant and changing and always present wherever we turn, it'll be Dan. And with that, I would ask somebody to make a motion, and let's vote.
I move that we nominate Dan Ventrioli and make him chairman on your recommendation.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
Mine's dead.
Okay, it's unanimous with Ken Mann absent. Okay, Dan, now you know what you got to do.
I didn't even vote.
I didn't either.
Oh, no.
Now I know how all these votes are fixed. Oh, I can just read the blog now.
Here it comes.
For the record, that represented, that represented the last vote, for the record, not a pre-vote.
Thanks, Ron. Okay.
One more time.
And I'll wait for all of you to be done. Okay.
There we go.
And it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. And we have a report from councilperson Marcus on the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District.
The board awarded the AVA QMD's highest honor, the William J. P. Knight Air Award, to Lancaster's Coast Auto Salvage. We had the presentation there at the board meeting. The board awarded $310,364 in Karl Moyer funds to Golden Valley Construction to hatch feet of retrofit, repower two pieces of off-road diesel-fueled heavy equipment. And the board approved allocating up to $73,000 in mobile source emission reduction, AB-2766 grant funds to the Antelope Valley Schools Transportation Agency.
And, Mr. Mayor, just a matter of housekeeping, I'll move that we excuse Councilmember Mann.
There a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. That doesn't have to be on the agenda, does it? Oh, okay. Okay, City Manager?
I have three announcements. One is actually sort of a teaser that we'll be announcing a couple of grants soon. We'll have the press conference, so stay tuned for that. We have a couple of exciting grants to announce. The second is that our partner, Solar City, has been named the Green Power Supplier of the Year by the U.S. Department of Energy. So, that's quite a high honor. We'll be doing a press release on that. And the last is to invite the public to Boulevard this coming Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on the Boulevard. Thirty-three businesses will be participating, handing out candy to kids. The question, the raging debate of the week between staff is if you expect 15,000 people, 6,000 of which are kids, how many key pieces of candy do you need to buy? There's no real answer to that, but we'll know at the end of the day on Saturday. And the other thing that's exciting about Boulevard is we will be recreating at 6:00, 7:00, and 8:00, is it? The Michael Jackson video thriller with the original, some of the original cast, original choreography, and a Michael Jackson impersonator. We might even see the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Chris do a moonwalk for us.
Is this the one where his hair catches fire?
I'm not familiar with that video.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. I mean, this really is a great opportunity for parents with kids. If you want your kids safe and have a really great time, this is the place to take them. We are going to be absolutely certain that everybody there is going to be safe. So, we hope to see you there. City Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers on the table. We ask that you fill the speaker cards out clearly and concisely, so if the mayor, the city council, or city staff needs to get in touch with you, they will have all your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time does start when you start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. John Peterson? David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. What a wonderful night to come to council. I still have my black patch from the very moving performance I saw here at City Council Chambers last December, and I appreciate what you've done, Mayor. I would have done no different had I been elected mayor. You know, I liked what you were saying before about well-being. I'd like to tell everybody that yesterday was my 20th wedding anniversary, and there's nothing in life that creates well-being more than a partner that you know is there for you. So, I thank my wife for that. You know, we were filling out our voter cards by mail, and what a dizzying array of things. It's hard to believe that anyone could be an expert on all the issues on the ballot. But one thing I'm sure of is Prop 19, and we need to vote for it. And I'll tell you why. I saw Austin Goldsby, the president's chief economic adviser, on The Daily Show last night, and he said something that I appreciated because it was true and brave. He said that the president is trying to save the police, firefighters, and teachers' jobs, and it's dragging us down. Those were his exact words. Now, that doesn't even count the unfunded pension liabilities that we face, and the fact that we will need a second round of stimulus to keep it all going. I've talked before about how the Soviet Union finally dissolved when they stopped paying their civil servants, and what happened also was that the people in the Russian Special Forces and the KGB drifted into the Russian mob and took it over, and now they run that. That's exactly what's happening in Mexico. Former Special Forces officers who were recruited to help the cartels have now taken them over, and we see the uptick in violence, the beheadings, the car bombs, all this stuff that's coming. So, if there was ever a reason to defund these criminals and the street gangs that they prop up, it is a good first step to get Prop 19 going and take away their money. I can't stress how important this is. I do a lot of war gaming, computer simulations of war for the last 30 years. We've overextended ourself. We've taxed our military. We've taxed our intelligence service. We've worn ourselves out, and these guys have nothing but time and the inspiration to retake this country that, it's like the Moors in Spain. They tried to drive them out, the Moors, for centuries, and they finally got them out, the Mexicans. They still think of it, this land is theirs. And so, there will be this nationalism, this pride, this fervor to defeat us, and that is the greatest national security threat we face, bar none. Thank you.
Thank you. Rochelle Walker?
Good evening, Rex Paris and your staff. I'm in here in regards to the ordinance that was passed last month. My concern is that it was not broken down as to the entire first offense or the whole revision of it. My son had a prior experience. He is a three-year administrative justice student. He just received his associate's degree in the African fabrication. He is 24 years old. He stands this height to me. So, when he was stopped, he looked like a little kid just joyriding, you know, in our little community. And I feel that he was intimidated. He is no gang attire. He's not any of that affiliated. And just like the gentleman spoke earlier on, young youths being intimidated. You know, they have that softness. He is one of the quiet little kids. I don't want my son having in the future suicidal, you know, any kind of thoughts. I want him to always believe that our police department is here for our safety and protection. So, I have a problem with that, you know, that it needs to be broken down. Our kids shouldn't be fearful of being stopped at all. I am a student also and a mother. I represent the Antelope Valley College at the White House in the 36th District of our district for McKean's Office. I was ASO president. I do have four degrees. So, my children are structured in our society, and, you know, the need and the stopping needs to be on these little gang members running around here acting like they run things. You know, my sons have been raised correctly. I do have a husband. I've been out there in the community. I've worked for probation. I've worked for security as a high school district. I also work for group homes, you know, pulling our youths, having an ear for them, of being constructive for our youths, reaching out to them. You know, and I don't want my son to be intimidated. I want him to feel that he's safe with our police officers. He's a little four foot, and there's giants over him. He doesn't know what to do. So, you know, we need to address that, you know, so that my son and other young youths can feel safe out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Cordell?
Welcome to the city staff and the additional members that run this city. I realize running this, running a city is a lot of work. Your science is in God we trust. God I trust. The rest of you, not so sure about. I'm concerned, we have elected you to be our servants, not our master. And I find all over the nation that too many of our civic governments treat the citizens like they're the master and we're the peasants. I want to stop that. I want to have some trust in this nation. I want to know how the city acquired every parcel of land in the area that compromises the area known as American Heavils Park. What will be the use of the church-type building on the south side of Jackman at Dayton? I want to know the price paid for each parcel. Was any of this land acquired by the use of eminent domain to force the people to sell? Why is our house being built on the northwest corner of Dayton, Jackman, listed as city property? For what purpose was this obtained? By eminent domain? For how much? We have built senior housing around this park over here, but the majority of the daytime use of the park is going to be for the schools, church schools. I want to know how the Antelope Valley Adventist School was given land that the citizens' taxes paid for. If it was a transfer from the location on Dayton Avenue, was the land exactly the same amount of square feet as original location to what they have now? Don't you understand this is illegal to lease public lands to any religious organization? Do you want me to investigate more about how the land was transferred and rezoned for Walmart in Quartz Hill? Who owned the land? Who sold the land? And was any person involved a member of the planning commission or the city council? Now, I'm concerned about churches not running our government. I'm also concerned that two communities in America have decided the citizens do not have a right to conduct Bible study in private homes, that that's against the law. They have to have an environmental impact study for $15,000, you know, to decide whether they're going to give them a permit. I'm for religious rights also. I'm concerned, I'm involved with a company called Americans United for the Separation of Church and State. So, I'm here to protect the churches also from the government, so that they have their rights. I intend to bring honesty all the way from Lancaster to Washington, D.C. I'm concerned there are 42 million people in America on food stamps. We have a problem in America. We need to all work together to solve this. There are an estimated 22,000 people in Antelope Valley that are unemployed. Where are they going to get jobs? There are no jobs. You want China to come here and make jobs for us? No, I want Americans here to make jobs for Americans. I hope that I can depend on you to conduct that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert Long?
First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmen, Councilwoman, for this opportunity to speak. Please bear with me. This is my first time ever speaking at one of these meetings. I wanted to speak on the issue of bullying and the Not in Our Town program that's coming up. I myself am a victim of bullying. I've lived here in Lancaster all of my life. I've gone to Linda Verdi for elementary school, to Paiute and Parkview for junior high, to Antelope Valley High School for most of my high school, and also eventually finishing up in a class of 1999 at Desert Winds High School. From my first day of kindergarten till, right up to the night of my high school graduation, I have been a victim of bullying. I was bullied in various different ways. I have been, I've had my back marked up with sharp objects. I've had, I've been knocked out with a roll of coins at one point, right across my temple, right above here in my eye, injury that can come back and haunt me. And the reason why I bring this stuff up is because bullying continues to have psychological damage, even for those like me who've been out of high school now for 11 years. I have since gone to college, which turned out to be a great experience, which seemed to have made up for a lot of that. I've gotten a bachelor's degree in psychology from California State University, Bakersfield, at Antelope Valley. I intend to go back to the same school next year to pursue a master's in social work. I've endured bullying both on campus in the school, in my neighborhood around me, and even in my home. Some of the psychological effects that still continue to bug me to this day, like I have a stuttering problem, which I've had since I was 16, because I get nervous in situations. I'm still, to this day, nervous around people, introducing myself to people. I still have a hard time, even with things like asking a woman out on a date, just because I have this phobia, this fear of being bullied. I am glad, and I want to see this program, Not in Our Town, be supported as much as possible, so that more kids don't grow up like I do, that they don't have to deal with the psychological effects that I continue to have to deal with as a result of bullying. And I have overcome a lot, like the fact that I'm even up here speaking about, speaking about this today, was proof positive that I overcame some of these fears, some of these social phobias. And I attribute a lot of this to my faith in God and in my Mormon religion. People in the church have been, have been an inspiration for me and helping to mentor me. I also now have the privilege of serving as a leader in my local congregation. All this in spite of everything, I just want to, I just want to say I'm glad to finally see something take place in the city of Lancaster to get bullying out of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Long. I appreciate that. Andrew Nieto? Nieto, come on, I forget.
Nieto.
Nieto. I'm old. It's hard to remember.
Well, I am also speaking on the subject of bullying. Robert and I have talked about our youth growing up, and we have realized that we actually had quite comparable situations. I also, from as early as I can remember, all the way through the end of high school, suffered bullying more than I can even think to describe. And the main thing that I remember, I remember so distinctly, it was almost impossible to get anybody to do anything about it. I remember in high school, I was sitting in my physical education class, and... class, and I went up to my teacher to tell him about what had been going on, and she said she couldn't do a thing about it unless she sees it. There was no way she was gonna see it. The kids knew exactly when she wasn't looking. I remember walking through the crowded halls of my junior high, and words would be whispered towards me as people passed. It is so difficult to articulate what bullying is when you're a victim. It's very difficult to report it because you don't know how to articulate it. Those who commit acts of bullying are that manipulative that they know how to make themselves look like the good party and you, the victim, like the wrong party, not just to yourself or your own self-esteem, but to those who are in authority. And it is true, bullying does not just happen on the campuses. It happens on the way home, on the way to school, and now with the internet, and within the walls of our own home. And bullying within the walls of our own home is just as real as the bullying that goes on at school. So, my purpose in speaking tonight is not to get everybody sad or anything of that sort. My purpose is to bring to awareness the feeling of impossibility in doing anything about it. This subject has been debated since time immemorial, and people who, like myself, who are victims of bullying, they are, I'll just say it, we are the reason that so little is done, because we remember, we remember how impossible it was to get any kind of resource. And my point, I want to stand that in contrast to what we had today at this meeting. It can be done. Bullying can be dealt with, and the way that Del Surd is doing it does not in any way infringe on the rights of the people committing the act of bullying. It can be done. There is hope, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our speaker cards. Um, oh, on a positive note, this is a great day. This is a momentous day. We are going to designate Lancaster Santa Claus. And with that... Is, is this, or is this not Santa Claus, right? The most quintessential Santa Claus you've ever seen. This is, this is Jim Greenleaf, who's been a resident since he was born. A lot of people know Jim. You can see him on Lancaster Boulevard, but I walked by this picture and I realized we have to have a Santa Claus. And so with that, we are designating Jim Greenleaf Lancaster's official Santa Claus for 2010. Probably wrong answer. And that should put an end to people wanting me to do the Christmas parade as Santa Claus. Okay, we are adjourned. Well, no, no, we can't adjourn. We have to do our closed session. We're gonna adjourn to closed session, and then we'll reconvene to, in the meeting when we get back, but we won't really say much, so. Thank you for coming. It was a great meeting. Uh, I look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. We're readjourned. City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council met in closed session under Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine B to consider threatened litigation. Gave direction to, uh, council concerning that, uh, that threatened litigation. No further actions taken.
I can't say anything, huh? Okay, that being said, we're adjourned until Tuesday, November ninth, 2010, at five P.M. Have a safe and happy Halloween. We'll see you at the Boulevard. And Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home.